Last Thursday.
Last Thursday. And before we do anything, I'd like for us to all stand up and take a minute of silence. We had a passing of one of our prior board supervisors, board supervisors, Bill Guy. I think he served with the district of three year, three year consecutive.
Three term.
Terms.
Twelve years.
Uh, twelve years to the district and he has helped, you know, a lot of our community and Pelican Preserves as well. So if we can all stand up and have a minute of silence. All right, thank you, everyone. Do you want to just like, just clear your mind? And just as a reminder, if you think silence or phones. So we'll go ahead and pick up on. Budget discussion. I give away one of the comments. It's up to you if I need somebody else to stand up. It's on the, is anybody on the agenda?
I already passed that part. Post this up to the board if you.
Is this one?
Just one.
Okay, we'll go ahead and I'll call one of your comments for this. Okay, Stephen Montalban, are we ready?
The budget.
Right at three minutes and the time will start after you announce yourself.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this meeting.
Do you want to state your name for that?
Stephen Montalban, 12040 Santa Luis Drive, Unit 201. I'm the association president. Uh, I just had a couple of items, one of which was the proposed increase in our, in your budget for multifamily and single family homes within Gateway. And then yesterday, I received new numbers where those have been significantly reduced. Initially, and I'll just speak to multifamily if I may, you'd called for a $599, $600 increase in your CDD fee. That's now been reduced to $157. I'd like to know how that happened. And I still believe that the $157 is too high. I still believe that number should be around $100, every calculation that I could possibly uncover. And I looked at a number of different items and went through a bunch of different notes. And it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the calculation of next year's 2026 CDD assessment is based on generating future funding for capital reserve projects at cash value. In reality, many of these costs will be long-term funded, not paid as cash. This methodology unnecessarily raises the annual assessment by hundreds of dollars. I believe I'm correct on that, but if you tell me I'm not, I will stand corrected and ask you for an explanation. But I still don't understand why these fees have gone up so significantly. I don't know what the difference is and why the multifamily units at Pelican Preserve are lower, although there's more of them, are lower than what they're, what they are in Gateway multifamily. I further don't understand how in the planning that you just about doubled the cost for the new CDD facility. And I don't understand how you tripled the cost for the ballparks or soccer field. Thank you.
I just have one question. If you can just tell the bottom. That's okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to the budget discussion. Do you want to start? Do we want to start with the last or we want to kind of go back and see the revisions? We have to insert. Yeah, so let's start from the beginning.
So we have Stephen Bloom and Russ on the call. To answer, the immediate question is, what's the big difference between the prior version and this version? The prior version assessed for the shortfall in the admin building and the parks. And Stephen, chime in, Laura, chime in at any point. We had a substantial amount, the math that we talked about for the capital reserve doing the 20% average over the next five years planned expenditures. At your last, last Thursday, you said, hey, we want to match what we did last year and bring it down to 279,000. So that was done. What else, Laura?
Uh, we, we shift, yeah, I spent three hours on the call yesterday with Stephen and Russ. We shifted some of the capital expenses, the half million dollar project for the parking lot because there, we didn't believe it was going to get done in fiscal '26, so we pushed that off to fiscal '27. Stephen and I combed through line by line in the budget, just looking at things. Our projected interest income, we did raise that because it was considerably less than what we were expecting to get, which helped lower the assessment. So we, we went through and looked at anything we could possibly find to help get this down.
So we added in $100,000 you discussed at the last meeting.
Correct. And I added in Chelsea's wage and her raise since she'll have that for next year. So I did take it up a little and then we put the ways to bring it back down.
The interest earnings, just so you know, the prior version only had $45,000 in interest earnings we anticipated for revenue. Stephen and Laura looked at actuals to date and we're at 170,000 for just this year. So that was bumped up. So that's, you know, a hundred plus thousand dollar offset on our assessments.
We did the same for Pelican.
Yep, we, we wanted to make sure your interest earnings would help offset that. What else?
That's not a big stop.
I, I think. Laura, did you change any silos or any.
No.
Where, where any line item changed from this to that?
No.
Yes.
Uh, the pond, the shared flowway.
The shared flowway was one. Uh, so the one-third Pelican pays for the shared flowway.
The $25,505.
Well, that splits, it's like 8,000.
For Pelican, 17%.
The shared flowway you put where?
In waterway.
In waterway, in Pelican or?
And, yes, Dan Gate, we both, it's involved.
So you divided, yes. Okay. And then what else? What other line items or silos did you change?
Admin, we put that $100,000 in for the administration. So Pelican would have been impacted by that. And then the biggest change is.
And did Pelican pay 14% or 17%?
17% because that's the new.
Okay.
And then the.
And it is in 17% of 100,000, just so it's, everything got divided out, so it went in the proper category, so it's a, it got divided the same as the rest of the wages, so it's not exactly 17%. But generally, roughly.
And then the last biggest thing, we put the reserves in the last version, we put, you know, in all of the different silos. Uh, if, excuse me, if you're, goodness, wrong. If you're trying, assuming, we assumed, which can be changed here, you wanted to match what you did last year for the reserves. So that, correct me if I'm wrong, was only, only put into 001.
Correct.
So Pelican would not be contributing to any capital reserves for any of the silos.
So that explains why on page three, the difference between the prior version two and version three, you added $62,000. Is that correct?
Where, what's, where are you looking?
Go to the first page, I'm sorry, second page of the shared costs. And go to the bottom. Line item, capital project reserves was not in the last.
Correct.
Version, and it's now in this version.
Correct.
So that, I'm assuming then that you're saying that the 62,000, if I add all of the silos, 62 plus 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 equals 279?
Yes.
I did not check that math.
It's not, I didn't have anyone else to put it here. This, in the silo, this is only under Gateway.
But, but my question is, is that the 279, you basically split among the silos?
Yes, which, which is exactly what was done just behind the scenes.
Okay, I was, I was trying to do a comparison between these and I've got about 15 line items that were questionable from version two to version three that sooner or later I guess we'll go through these. How are we going to do that? Are we going to do that right now?
What, what is the title of the page you're looking at or page number?
It's, it's. On the version three, it's about the, go to the fifth page, says fiscal year 2026 allocation of shared costs. You've got it on the screen. Version two did not. Keep in mind, version two had all that capital separated out as what Steve was talking about where it was being funded as cash. We're now basically amortizing it with a 279 number.
Okay, I'm on the shared cost there. All right. If you don't mind, reference again what you just asked.
The 62,047, my question was, is that number plus the other silos all?
I'm still trying to find the 62,000.
It's on the second page.
Second page, only the bottom, the last item.
It's on the new one, not on the.
Yes, it's on version three.
That's what I'm looking, this is version three.
And it's board book page seven.
On that page?
Yeah, I don't have any page numbers, that's the problem.
It's the second page of the shared cost.
Yeah, second page.
Okay, I'm there.
It's the very last line, right above the subtotal.
Capital project reserves.
Yes, and although it says that that's in the Gateway General Fund and Pelican Shared, it is not shared in the silo, it is only under Gateway. I didn't have any other way to display it on here, so that it's included just in Gateway. And you'll see that when we get down to the 001 budget, it's only on.
So the 62,000 really in there, you don't see this?
In Gateway, in 001 only.
It's not in Pelican. Pelican is being $0 against.
That'll help.
Yeah, I will, thank you. It was being very close to crunch time.
I published yesterday.
Do I keep going? I've got a.
Yeah, go ahead, just go through.
Go to the, go to the next page. I think you just answered the first one. The 175,000 is what you were just talking about, the re, that calculation of the interest.
Yeah, because if you look at my note, it says there was $172,000 in interest as of the end of May, and we still have four months to go left for this year. So Stephen and I were both comfortable that the 175 was a reasonable estimate for interest on our investment.
Okay, and the special accessory tax collector, that just changed based upon the numbers changing.
Correct.
Okay.
That's an auto calculation.
Uh, retailing impact fee, that's the new fee that we found we got more money than we had before.
That was 377,000 originally.
377 is 489 in version three.
Yes, and that is.
That's a positive.
That's a positive, yeah.
That is because the apartment complexes that are being constructed at the Commerce Roundabout, they pay their park impact fees. So we called the county and said, hey, what's the new number? And they told us that is the available amount that we have for them.
And that is the amount.
For the park.
For the park, yes.
Then I jump all the way to, pages.
Just tell me which section.
Waterway Management Services, Item Weight Maintenance, we bumped that up, looks like about $21,000. Is that, is that an up or down from the other previous?
That's negative. If you look to the left, it was $201,000 last year. That number has not changed since the last version, it's only.
Version two had it.
Oh, I, I looked at the contract, so that's why it went down, so.
Uh, next page, Park and Recreation, this one, let me come on. Why did we have an $80,000 plus addition to payroll salaries? Did we move something from someplace to one place?
Yep, if you look at the notes, it also includes all the pool and park, the pool as well. We used to split Parks and Rec and pool separate, now they're just all under Parks and Rec. And there's also some admin time in there. I did include all that in my notes.
But there was not an increase, you just combined them.
Correct, yeah.
I, I saw that, yeah.
So we, it's one department.
Yes, correct, it's Parks and Rec. No, we did keep the expenses, the, the operating expenses for the pool separate, so we could track that.
So if I go back to the old version two and add the numbers, they equal this?
I didn't change that, yeah. Uh, no, they did go up a little bit because of the $100. Yeah, but that's the, there's a separate line, it's that market adjustment line, so that's the only increase. That's $7,400 on the market adjustment line this one, this year. That's the only new, because that was the portion of the 100,000 that you said.
And on the next page, sod replacement, soccer field, 230,000. Is, is that, I thought you said earlier we're purring that, what were you purring?
The parking lot extension.
Parking lot.
Yes, that was 500,000.
That's for two fields, right?
No, that is for, that is for one complete field sod replacement, guys. And, and then the typical rep, sod replacement on the remainder of the field.
Did we get?
Stephen.
Did we?
You guys are kind of loud, sorry.
Hey, Stephen.
Excuse me, you guys are kind of loud.
Thank you.
You can talk over the lobby if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Did we get turf estimates?
I did not.
The next item I had was capital projects.
Before we go.
Yeah.
That, that's a, how did it get to be so great and increased?
That is a, a complete, that is tearing out the sod. That sod that we have out there is long past its use for life. This is piggybacking the county's contract that they, they put out an R and P with JSN to completely remove the sod of one of those fields and totally redo the irrigation, the sod, everything. And it's a five, it would be a five-year program. We would do one a year since we have five fields.
I really wonder when Gateway needs to get rid of all that concord sod.
So the, the county, is it the county or city?
The county.
Okay, so the county has, they're doing other projects, we're able to piggyback on that? Is that still an option if we defer our, defer this for a year?
Yeah, well, as long as their contract's valid, otherwise we would have to solicit our own R and P.
So as much as I would love to get new sod for the fields, I think we should defer this item and actually, and you guys may have done some of this due diligence, but I would like to have a formal presentation, a proposal with the plan, what does it look like in five years? How, how will this benefit Gateway other than, you know, lead use? How are we offsetting some of that? I know we've got increases that we've been doing. What are our other options? We looked at turf, what would that be? Turf over 15 years versus sod towards maintenance and.
I think Angela did all that, right? Because I, I was going to say, I spoke with Angela about this because I had questions and then he went and agreed, he dealt with me, so maybe that's something that.
Yeah, I mean, when you're saying turf, you mean artificial, artificial.
There was a lot more.
And, and, you know, a lot of areas here have gone turf. I'm not a huge fan because it's so hot. But again, they do it for a reason. You don't have to cut it. There's very little maintenance to it over, over time, but you, you know, it is.
Single sprinklers is.
Yeah, but in most cases it is, it's more expensive upfront.
Right.
And if we're, if we're blocking at 230, I'm sure we would be concerned. But I think if I'm looking at the budget, if there's an opportunity to, to cut a cost, this is one area that I would be comfortable.
But your 230 is really 230 times five.
Correct. Five, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm thinking about, what does it look like as a much larger project? So, and I, you know, I've, I've got four boys who we play out there, I coach out there. I'd love to have, one field, delaying one field for a year isn't going to cripple us, but it also slows down the starting process. But in my opinion, my recommendation would be, I want more conversation around this. I want to know more of the plan because it is going to be a very significant expense. We're going to, we're going to spend over a million dollars. Yeah, we're going to spend over a million dollars. I'd like to look at the total use and plan of the, of the complex.
We have milked the, these fields along since, I, I believe these conversations were occurring before I started, so.
Well, the other thing too, is this is paying cash. I'd much rather see this debt financing, what's the service life of this? 10 years?
As of right now, 38, 39 actually.
Old grass. But my, my point is, is that, again, why are we spending 230,000 times five, which could go over a million dollars? It's cash, let's borrow that money and debt finance it. Get the cost down to where people can pay for it after five years. The guy's coming here in six years, gets it for free. That's ridiculous. Let's debt finance that and look at that. That, to me, is a capital item. Same thing with capital projects and equipment, that 208,000. What makes that up? That, why aren't we amortizing that also?
So the biggest portion of the capital projects is the 160,000 pool deck resurfacing?
But why, why aren't we debt financing that? That's what the, the whole deal was, is try to take and amortize this stuff instead of paying cash. It's got a 10-year of life, why do we want to pay for it in the first year?
It's the 30 of the board.
It's, to me, it's a place to cut money, save money.
I think that's a project and, and we look at a funding source. And again, I understand why we, you know, maybe we just are going to have to set aside some money for just ongoing maintenance for a year, but to me, we're going to spend 1.2 million just in sod replacement. And how are we going to offset that? We have increased some of the revenue, but what is the value of bringing in or, or charging more for our fields? We don't have a concession stand they can use, so there's lost revenue there. You know, are there, we don't operate in the summer, so there's lost revenue through tournaments and other events. So one field isn't going to help us, you know, offset that cost. I want to look at it as a complete project because their fields, space in Lee County is extremely high demand, extremely high demand. And we have never wanted to increase too much because, at least because we have a direct benefit with 50% of, of the use comes directly from Gateway residence. The other 50% allows us to have programs of quality to benefit our Gateway residence. So my, I hate pulling any money out of Parks and Rec, but to me, I think we pull this back and we look at it from a much larger perspective, from the fields and services and programs and revenue opportunities and just look at it from a bigger perspective.
So the pool we're surfacing needs to happen next year?
Yeah, we're, I.
That has nothing to do with the two fif, uh, the two third.
Ed mentioned the 208.
Well, so let's, let's, let's go one thing at a time.
I thought we were done with this.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the, let's go with the two, with the sod replacement, let's finish that and then we'll do the.
So, but then one sod replacement, is there any money that has to be allocated there?
I know at one time I heard conversations about that, but I don't remember. But the Lee County Warner fields, would they take them?
I'm, I'm completely against that and I think we have, I'm.
Based upon history, I would say no. One of the reasons why Lee County is, the park impact fees way back when when Roger Sherman was on the board and the board then decided to do the soccer field was Lee County said, we have the money, but we don't want to do the continual ONM and maintenance and personnel costs of that. That's why Lee County said, here's some Parks impact fees. And they did a second charge later on.
So, but even in current environment, we don't have an opportunity to give it to them?
They would never, they wouldn't put another dime into that field.
Okay, but we wouldn't have to pay for it. It would be a Lee County.
I mean, we had a discussion almost about that.
That's all I'm asking is if that is an opportunity.
We haven't had a discussion.
It is an opportunity for recognizing just, we're not, we need to pay for also. They have a $13 million budget shortfall based upon whatever.
Well, okay, that's their problem.
Legally, legally, it's okay. It's, it's allowed.
I would like to, hey, getting rid of.
My question, my question was on this, is, is the 230,000 all just for that one field?
No.
So, so it's not 230 is going to come out, it's going to be something, something seventy. There's going to be a residue to do other work. What, what is that number?
Probably 180.
Well, you have 5,000 for repair.
Is that ONM in there as well?
$50,000 is in there for repair, so it's 180,000.
So 180 would come out?
Yes, if you decide not to do that.
I just want to make sure the work.
It would be 180 for five years.
Well.
Wait, wait, no, wait, pause.
Not for a second.
No, I think it's 70 plus the 50.
That's like 120.
May I answer?
Yeah, so you think, go ahead.
This current year, we had $70,000. That's to do all five fields, any sod replacement that we have during the summer. I reduce that number anticipating we would have had a brand-new field and our, our costs would have gone down. So if you take out the replacement, the number needs to stay at 70.
And let's, have, have.
Should we knock that one?
But had we talked with other experts to say that doing one field at a time is the right thing to do? Because I'm going to tell you my, my position on, you do one field, where does all the usage go?
The one to the.
On the one field. So you're, you almost quadruple the usage on that one field because now everyone, it's the most desirable field. So out of the gate, when a field is new, everyone's going to be on that new field. I think you have to shut it down and do half at a time and.
From a project management perspective, doing all of the fields at one time is the most ideal because then you're paying one mobilization, demobilization cost. One, you're doing excavation of everything at one time instead of.
That's more cost effective.
That's more cost effective.
Debt finance it and be done.
And Ed would say, 10-year program, yeah, to keep the cost, that's the way I would do it.
So we can, if, what I'm hearing, it sounds like you want to reduce it to the 70,000 and then we'll, we'll look at artificial, we'll put together a presentation and come back in front of you.
But it is a project, make it a project.
And I understand that, but I'm saying, why don't we at least look at, get rid of? Why do we want to have this burden on us?
Are we required to have X and Y on the schedule, right?
Why can't we just have smart contact, Lee County, and verify one way or the other? Or is there any interest in?
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
It'd be done with.
Get, get a thought process and then we can look at, what would it take when we, if we would choose to get rid of it? And then if we decide we want to keep it, then I like what Ed is saying, let's go for the 10-year findings. But let's, let's.
Well, we should like a project and that's part of the project, current state review.
But, but in the, in the meantime, if we give the county, we find out and we either eliminate that as an option or an alternative, or we go ahead and if, if they're not interested, not interested at all, then we go with what Jeff was talking about, let's go with what the plan is going to be. Are we going to go artificial? Are we going to go sod? What's the long-term advantage or cost of either one of those to what, what we're really looking at? We know that the, going artificial has a huge upfront cost. But then the ONM, and the ONM is irrigation, you know, man is.
Cutting.
Cutting, there's a lot of things that go down that are advantageous, but what's the answer over 10 years?
And, and if the artificial would have a guaranteed durability of 10 years, 15 years, whatever.
Typically.
What is it typically?
They typically do, 10 to 15 years.
Well, that, that's another big plus.
So, that, that's why I.
I'd like to look at all of it.
I, I would.
I, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
But for budget purposes today, is the suggestion then to change that, that 230,000 to 70,000?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I can go along with that.
Then dropping down again to the 208, what makes up the 208? I had a hard time, I couldn't, I couldn't.
It was 160,000 for the pool deck, 10,000 for bleachers, 13,000 for the pool vacuums and then 25,000 for the FPL linear park improvements.
One more time, 160 for pool deck?
Pool deck, this line.
Bleachers, 10,000. Vacuums, 13, and FPL linear park improvements for 25.
And why do you say that the, the pool deck has to be done this year?
Um, it's.
This next year?
It's becoming safety concerns.
Yeah, it's bad. You, you see it on the 28th.
I don't have any problem with the, with what you've got listed on the deals. Well, my problem is, why are we paying cash for it? It's got a 10-year life. At worst case scenario, just go to the bank, go to a line of credit and we go five years, worst case. I just don't understand and I'm totally opposed to any more of this capital coming out as cash. This is ridiculous. This is why the people are seeing the creep on these rates. We, we pay cash for stuff. We, we pay cash for stuff. It makes no sense.
What is it? So, I did briefly talk to Stephen about a five-year loan and, you, Jesus. You always have the option to take out another bond series of that fifty-five-million-dollar validation that we did, you know, a couple of years back. It's your purview on which one you want to pursue. Obviously, there's expenses for each of those. If you choose bond, there's bond counsel, there's the engineer, there's the assessment methodology. If you choose a bank loan.
Maybe it's a lot cheaper.
Well, bank loan, you're subject to whatever, either, both have an interest rate. One, one's a shorter term and one's a longer term. So, it's, it's really.
Well, the pain in the pool deck's the one it got. I don't know, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars is worth going over for ten years.
See, that's why, that's why I'm looking at, what's ten years, five years, I don't care. It's just paying cash is what, people want to know, why the hell did we have creep and jump in this rate? There's your answer.
Well, we're spending money.
We're spending money like crazy and you don't have to do it.
I'm less concerned about one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollar at one time impact. Doesn't kind of make sense to me.
My thought is just go to the bank, set up a loan or better yet, like I was talking to Russ and Stephen on, is just take, and if we need to, set up a separate bond series that will allow us to take, for example, a vacuum. It's got a three-year life, why do I want a ten-year loan on that? That makes no sense. I'd only take out a three-year note on that. So, when we have a three-year, five-year, seven-year, ten-year, twenty-year, the borrowing would be based on, on that. We'd be done with it. We're just trying to keep the cash expenditure down to minimal.
You do have available funding in Parkson Rec of the twenty-twenty-three, of, of the bond validation. You also have the option for a short-term bank loan, which would only be a five-year term.
Well, these are things that we would not have to do right now, but they would be, we could do them in the next sixty days of, between now and the time we present this because it will not raise it, it's gonna lower the note. So, that's an option to be like, I don't know how few. Steve, can you do a calculation of what the impact of this would be by making that change right now?
Yes.
You can?
So, Ed.
The two items, change the number two items.
I, I just want to change it to the debt finances instead of paying two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars in cash. I'd like to see what is the amortized value of that, picking up five years.
Okay, so for right now, you want to see that at zero?
No. I want to see, I want to see.
A different way to pay it.
I'll make it, I'll make it really, if it's five years, two-oh-eight divided by five, it's about forty-two thousand. I want two-oh-eight to be forty-two thousand.
So, this would stay here, but we would offset it at the bottom. Because we're still gonna have two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars in expenses. What would happen is we would offset it at the bottom.
You're just gonna put it down below under capital reserve.
Under other financing sources.
So, today you are choosing to set the high watermark.
Correct.
So, if you chose to keep that number in there for the high watermark, which is for the letters, which is what, you know, everybody gets and everybody reads, you would have the opportunity over the next sixty days, like you said, Ed, to, we can, you know, task Stephen and, and staff with evaluating a five, five, that would give us an opportunity to reach out to the bank, what are interest rates right now? Reach out to Rhonda Mossing with bond and see what the rates are going for that and give you a way to finance future capital expenses.
And it sounds like the direction we're going down. And I think we've kind of been doing this anyway in most cases, but it sounds like what we're doing is creating a guiding principle or a policy around capital, capital funding. So, I think maybe we need to consider kind of making stance on that. The board's position on any capital initiatives is it will be debt financed over a determinate amount and they would set a threshold of, you know, any item over X amount.
Five years, I think, maybe it's, it's five years.
Would be funding group.
I think five years.
That way, we don't have to have this conversation around what we're gonna do, what we're not gonna do. We're automatically gonna assume any capital improvement.
Has a life beyond five years.
That has a life beyond five years. The funding source should be debt financed. So, that's what our position is and unless we say different, the staff and the system manager should always operate under those.
So, we have a base in which we're going.
Yeah, and then you just come up with the two options of the debt finance for the five years.
Okay, but for, for purposes of today's vote.
Leave it at two-oh-eight.
We'll keep it in.
Leave it at two-oh-eight and then you want her to add that down below then?
No.
To make it forty-two or not?
No, they're gonna come back in the next sixty days telling us what two-oh-eight can do.
Our meeting note for Laura.
Leave two oh eight in there for right now, okay.
Yeah, the meeting note is to look at options for debt financing to reduce that.
Yes, fine.
Yeah, from a policy perspective and from a management perspective, maybe the board wants to look at a couple of projects as opposed to like a one, two-oh-eight, maybe a five-hundred-thousand-dollar five-year term and have a couple of projects identified.
So, so not only a timeframe, but a cost?
Yes, because typically, yeah, the cost is, you may have points, you may have a, a, there's law firms out there that all they do are bank loans for local governments. And so, their forms are real simple and they're easy to understand, don't take much work. I've done it with some other districts, if they have knowledgeable counsel. So, the costs are typically less for the short-term borrowing.
Yeah.
Because you don't have the issuers' council pending, you don't have the bond, you don't have a validation, you don't have all that. Jepa River Ridge, they have a number of projects, million-dollar borrowing from Sanopis, it's five years.
Yeah, if we're having the big projects with the longer service life, that's, that's a whole different bucket.
Yes.
But having these items set up which for the next twenty years, if you go and look at the capital reserve, we've got a lot of items that fall in this category of the five-year very easily that would essentially amount to a line of credit. But when we need it, we go borrow.
And, and some districts have lines of credit, especially like for Hurricanes and Ruinses. And so, they did, we knew it earlier, twenty-five hundred bucks.
And staff does a good job of like what we did with SRF with bucketing items, you know, packaging them. So, we just continue that process.
Got it.
We go with that, okay.
Before, before.
Three more, three more pages.
Before you move, remember we said the two-seventy-nine of capital reserves? Just, I want you to make note of the capital, the fifty-six, seven, forty-five, Parkson Rec. That's part of the two-seventy-nine.
Sixty-seven, now we're adding fifty-seven, okay, got you, got you.
Before you leave that page, Ed, before you leave the page you're on, the license plate.
Yeah, we agree, yes.
We, we got forty thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
What value do we get out of this? I mean, now we put them in, I thought at no cost for Lee County.
No, we, we pay the annual fee, it's five thousand dollars per camera. And what that includes is anything, I've had to call them several times actually. Any maintenance, it includes the transmitting, like we had some cameras that were down, not working, they come, we pay nothing. So, that covers all of that, replacing cameras, basically just like a service contract.
Have we gotten any use?
But that's what, that's my point, we really want to.
The sheriff, I can, I can tell you that the police use them regularly, like multiple times a day they're in there looking at stuff.
The reports are very, because you, have you seen it? Like you can ask for the, the report, like, and every hit and every why?
Yeah.
Sure, my point was, is, is it used?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Well, and my point more specifically, does it impact our residents in our community? I think it helps the police, whether it has any impact on us.
Well, but isn't that?
Oh, but what if they're just doing it, helping us?
Well, but, I mean, they've got these cameras everywhere. Why do we need to spend forty thousand dollars a year?
Well, I think the issue is, is because the action that they're monitoring is here and not someplace else.
Well, but the cars that come through, they're gonna pick up another camera a mile down the road. I'm questioning, is it really truly worth for us, we spend that, what, forty thousand dollars a year? I think if we turn them off, we, we would never see any impact.
But how long is the, we've had what?
Three.
About five years.
No, it might be, it was after me, no, it's before, it was just before, it might be like three, four years, maybe.
I think that's a great conversation for Vaughn, like if you reach out to him because he's the one that I spoke with.
Who's Vaughn?
Lieutenant Vaughn.
I, I think we haven't come in.
Yeah, I.
So, we've had it for three years. We, we want to do an assessment, to Vaughn's point, we want to understand the value of the cameras and we'll take the cost to the side. We want to understand the value of the cameras to the police department. More importantly, how does that directly impact residents? You know, because if there is a, if there's a violation or.
And we can easily do that in the next, before the sixty days.
Okay, and I'd like to do, I'd like to, I, I just don't think if we turned them off, we would know one way or another, we wouldn't really see any impact.
I, I think when we talk to the lieutenant, you may want to ask him to look at some of the cases, tire cameras. There's an attempted murder case that's down there, they were able to track the route.
Yeah, and, and that's kind of, well, I don't think.
Plagiarial of these cameras.
Necessarily wanted to speak, but it, it's.
In, in.
They, they either sell, it's real simple, they can either sell, they want, they want us to have.
They want us to have.
Or not, but.
I need the report. The report takes the feeling out of it. I think you say, bring me the report and like how many hits you have and what was the end result of it? And then you can make that decision. I think that's the best, if they can feel it now.
If, if what's the question?
They have no lefty county.
To put it another way, is, if it's, is the benefit to you and we don't have them, we'll, you take them.
Is it worth, is it worth residents paying two dollars a year to have the cameras?
Well, I've been here twenty years, I've been here twenty years, fifteen without the cameras, fifteen, eighteen. And, you know, I haven't seen it change one way or the other. I'm not negating that they could, that could have a positive impact. I'm just saying, is it worth forty thousand?
Let's, let's get them in.
And if it is, and if it is worth forty, why doesn't Lee County put the bill?
I think you know the answer to that.
Well, yeah, because they can get us to do it.
Somebody else to do it.
Because what we heard when we came in here, we're gonna put them in for nothing. And they did.
No, it was always the cost.
No, no, they put it, they installed it, they were, they installed it for free.
No, I thought we, we didn't have, we did not pay for any of the equipment.
None of the install.
It's just spent the five thousand dollars for a year.
They terminated them, maybe they all get back to them, that's why.
Well, I'm okay with that. I'd love to go back.
So, we're gonna evaluate that.
Let's get them in and about it. Sell it, sell it to us. Make it show that it's worth it.
Okay.
Next item I had, go back three more pages. Gateway Common Construction, three million, two-two-two. What is that?
Go back, I, where you're working here.
Go, go, go up two pages.
I mean, where are you?
What's the time?
Other fees in charge.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, don't give me pages, give me sections, please.
Oh, that's a fine.
Yeah, give me sections, I'll be able to find it.
Three-two-two-two, six-five-two.
Yep.
What is that number?
That is the cost, that is our share, well, all of it because it's all Gateway. That's the cost of just the Gateway Commons construction.
The, the park?
The park.
The park.
So, if you look.
That's the total all-in cost of the, the park?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if you look, it, it, like I, I have a note here that it is offset by bonds, interest and carry forward. So, it does get subtracted off below, so.
Yeah, it's all debt finance.
Yes.
Capital.
So, that's just for this coming year?
That's the total cost of building the park.
For this coming year only?
Total cost of building the park.
Capital costs. And that's being debt financed.
Yes.
So.
We haven't, we haven't committed any more than page one.
Yes, that's, that's for everything that you've approved.
Yeah.
Okay, but we've only approved page one.
So, everything on page one.
Okay.
Then, the one million, eight fifty-three, is that the add-on of the, the, of the building?
That is the total cost of building the building. So, that's including, that, that's the new total, that's, that's the twenty-seven percent.
So, that, but when you, when you say that, you gotta watch that because that's dangerous. Because that building is fifty-nine percent utility.
Yeah, it's twenty, it's the twenty-seven percent.
So, when you do this, this is twenty-seven percent.
Of the total cost.
Of the, of the differential.
No, it's twenty-seven percent of the cost.
Total, pure total, so six million, eight-hundred thousand times point-two-seven amortizes what it is. Okay.
And then again, that is offset below between bonds, carry forward, interest, all of that.
Got you, okay, okay.
So, if I handle that?
And you'll see that repeat in the Enterprise Fund and in the Pelican Fund. Their, their portion, the fourteen percent for Pelican and the fifty-nine for Enterprise.
And then on the next one, the bottom line, next page, is the net. It looks like we went from seven ninety-seven to eight, right there, eight-eight-five-five.
That's other financing sources.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That's just those who are hurting the economy.
That's the total of all of this right here, of the, of these.
That section.
Of this section right here.
Those were all the questions I had on the O-01 for at least the residents here in the O-01 residence in concern of the differential between version two and version three of how you were able to take it over one million, eight-hundred thousand down to one million, what are we now? Or one, one hundred, one-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars versus eighteen-hundred dollars.
Any other questions for the general fund, O-01? So, just to recap, the only change that we have is reducing the sod replacement to seventy thousand, everything else basically same.
And two or three things to look at.
Yes, well, we're setting the high watermark, so that'll, that'll be, this will be what include, is included in the letter and then, yes, until we go to the August, hopefully the proposed August public hearing where we can better refine some of these.
So, the status statement, you're gonna have to set it at the high water.
Okay, if you do that, Steve, you, you, you now have the deal. Going back to page two, what is the numbers now that were showing on there for twenty-twenty-six that were thirteen-seventy-six and eleven-oh-two are now what?
It goes to, you're looking at the one that has the roadway allocation, water management, Parkson Rec.
Everything on there, bond series.
That doesn't include, okay, so you're gonna hit that one.
Totally, totally, that's what they have to pay.
Is now.
Like total with debt service?
I'm sorry?
Total with the debt service?
Yeah, it's what they have to pay.
Thirteen forty-five, twenty-two.
Thirteen forty-five and for, um.
Multi-family is ten seventy-one.
Ten seventy-one.
Which, what is the increase?
Uh, I don't know, the total? No, but then that change for single-family is a hundred, around a hundred-and-fifty-five and for multi-family is a hundred-and-twenty-six.
Okay, and the, you know, percentages, those, I did always hate the percentages, they don't mean nothing. Thirteen forty-five and ten seventy-one is right now going in as a high watermark.
For, for, well, once we get through this, yes, that's, that's the only numbers that change.
And then between now and sixty days from now, we've got two or three other items that could.
So, the only thing I can, I can reduce the sad to seven, you know, that was the impact, yeah.
Okay.
All right, is there any for O-02?
Yes. If you go down to the very end of O-02.
The last page?
What, last page?
The GRS quarter one, yes. It printed weird, sorry, I was in a hurry. Okay, so five-hundred-and-six-thousand-eight-hundred dollars that for Pelican's share of the administration building.
Correct.
But didn't we levy last year three-hundred-and-some of thousand for our share of what we felt was going to be the cost last year?
So, if you look above that, these numbers right here, you actually did not assess for that last year, you chose to offset it with reserves. So, Pelican did not actually pay for that dollar mark for fiscal twenty-five. If you look, it's right here, this two-sixty-five, four-eighty, which is for the capital outlay. If you look, it's right here, this two sixty-five, four eighty, which is for the capital outlay, and then it was decided that you were gonna use carryforward, so you never actually paid for that, it was not assessed.
Had the bill come through, would it have paid on reserve?
It would, it came on reserves, there was no assessment.
But there was no assessment?
Correct.
Oh, okay, I thought we had assessed, and that money should have been reserved.
Girl, I thought the same thing.
It was, no, it was taken on reserves.
I thought the same thing.
Okay.
It was an authorization to spend if required.
Yes, from reserves.
Yeah.
Up to this dollar mark, yes.
Okay.
So that was, that never actually hit your tax bill.
So. From the original amount that was in the two thousand twenty-three bond amount for the administration building, this is the total additional cost, the five hundred and six thousand, eight hundred is the total.
No, uh, the five hundred and six, if, if you can, I don't want you to read my note here, the total fourteen percent Pelican share, with the new costs, all in for the admin building, is nine hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, it's nine hundred sixty-one thousand, eleven dollars, it's this line right here. You had bonds in the twenty twenty-three series of five hundred, six thousand, eight hundred, and so that's why that amount is here, and it's also offset down here. This is the difference between those two numbers. So your share is nine sixty-one, zero, 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 one, one, and you already have five hundred and six thousand, eight hundred dollars in bonds, this is the difference, the four fifty-four, seven, eleven.
True. Okay.
Two, eleven.
So whether by reserves or, um.
Assessment.
Assessment. The total amount that Pelican owes on that administration building is five hundred and six thousand, eight hundred dollars.
No, nine hundred six thousand, nine hundred sixty-one thousand, eleven dollars, it's these two numbers together.
Right.
See, this, the total is nine sixty-one, zero, one, one, you have bonds already issued of five oh six, eight hundred, this is the delta, the four fifty-four. So you actually are paying a total of nine hundred sixty-one thousand, eleven dollars for the admin building.
But.
Some of it's already taken care of by the bonds.
Right.
The four hundred and fifty-four thousand is what's left over, that's your, that's your shortfall.
Shortfall.
Pelican, or I mean Gateway has one, Enterprise Fund has one, we all have a shortfall.
Okay, so the shortfall, okay, okay.
So the, the, the difference between.
The total is nine sixty-one.
Yes.
Which is equal to fourteen percent.
Yeah, that's your fourteen percent.
But there's still four fifty-four due.
Correct, and the, the difference between this budget and what Gateway is doing is that at the P-PAC meeting in May, they opted, at least for purposes of the high watermark, they recommended to assess the shortfall and not take it from reserves.
And what if at a subsequent meeting, now, after we take this vote?
Mm-hmm.
What if, uh, P-PAC chooses to take it from reserves or some combination thereof?
Your assessment will go down for fiscal twenty-five.
Down. It's down, how much?
Uh, just a minute, I can tell you exactly.
Be a pretty good chunk of money, girl.
I would hope. Hence the reason why I'm asking the question.
Like a hundred bucks a month.
Divided by twenty-five, twenty-five.
That's close.
Yeah, well, without a, without a calculator, I can't do that.
Okay, so. No, I just need to, I was gonna check this. Your new assessment, well, would be, uh, it would go down forty-six dollars and twenty cents for a single family and thirty-two sixty-nine for a multi-family. The new amount for single family would be eleven oh seven ninety-five, and multi-family would be nine eighty-five sixty-seven, which is a four point two and three point one, three point three percent decrease in assessments. So the methodology is actually in your favor.
Okay, but. The version two that we saw, Pelican was paying an additional seventy dollars, that was that number.
That's the number, that's this, that's because of this number right here.
Version three, we're paying a hundred and forty-something. So if it only goes down forty-some odd dollars, you still got a hundred dollars that it's increased.
That was the impact of the wages, the hundred thousand that you guys gave us to spend, that was the only thing that I changed in the budget.
On the share.
And one, and the shared cost of the flowway, which was similar before, but yeah. The, the hundred thousand dollar pool that you gave us from the rear increases that some, uh.
The big changes in the road.
Uh.
The road, it's the big change.
And the road went down. Oh, there was a, we had a different, because of some expenses on the Gateway side, the, the road base actually went down too.
So Pelican is now baseline.
Yes.
The Stony Brook's not in.
Stony Brook's not in.
And Pelican's the base.
So on the prior version, Gateway was the, for the roadway calculation, Gateway was the baseline for both landscaping and road maintenance. After we went back, looked at the numbers, adjusted some numbers, moved some around, Pelican became the baseline. So it went from like four seventeen to like.
Three sixty-nine.
Or seventy-seven, so Pelican Road is the baseline now, and Gateway Landscaping is, are, are they the baseline for both?
Uh, no, it's not both. Uh, Gateway Landscaping is the base at thirty-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents, and Pelican Roads are the base at three seventy-one.
That was another big change. Because, because the cost went down.
Okay, so that, so your statement to me earlier, that if Pelican took everything out of reserves, our, would, our increase would actually go down and we'd be less.
Correct.
Be paying less.
Paying less, yes.
Wasn't true, because you're using, um, the roadway and everything else.
It still could increase by a hundred bucks. No, it still goes down, you were negative even before the changes in the roadway. It had a very small impact, a matter of maybe like ten dollars, so it, it was nega, as soon as I took out that amount or offset it by using the reserves, that four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar number, you went, your assessments increased, before we even messed with the roads. And so now when I take it out, it just didn't decrease as much, but it still decreased.
So if at a subsequent meeting, P-PAC were to say, we're just gonna pay it.
Yep.
And be done with you people.
Yep.
Get, get you out of, out of our hair completely. What would, what would the assessment?
That's what I just gave you, that's the numbers. If I take that dollar amount, that four hundred and fifty-four thousand, that is your assessment. Those two numbers I gave you.
Tell them, please.
It would be a thousand, seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cents for single family, and nine hundred sixty dollars and seventy-nine cents for, for multi-family. I'm sorry.
Seventeen, four, one.
No, ten seventy-four, fifty-eight.
Ten?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, fifty-eight.
And then.
Multi-single.
Yes, multi-family is nine, six, zero, seven, nine.
Seven, nine. Okay, and then going back to the O-02 at the very end, the four hundred thousand.
Yes.
So I thought that. Okay. The three hundred thousand to offset the extra ponds, that's because they wanna do a project that's six hundred thousand, and then we're talking about budgeting three hundred thousand this year and three hundred thousand next year.
Correct.
But you're, um, but I think staff had suggested to them that they do all of six hundred thousand and see if you can't get some, um, other funding through, uh, different, um.
A grant.
Grants and things like that. Right? But you're budgeting for it anyway, why can't that?
The grant would not come to fruition at least for two years.
And you need to budget for what the expenses are actually going to be on the top line, so if I only put three hundred in, you can only spend three hundred.
Yeah, they're gonna do the whole pond in one year, they're going to spend the six hundred.
Right.
And if the budget only has three.
They can only spend three.
You gotta bring the other three in from somewhere.
That's why it's offset.
How can we get a grant for, 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 you know?
That's, 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 that's different. The grant money won't apply to this, we won't get it in time.
Be future ponds.
That's a future pond.
That's why, that's why the pond subcommittee is putting, just like we did on the Gateway side, a priority list. So I'll give you an example, when we applied for HMGP, we had applied for twenty-seven ponds. Well, when it actually came time to sign the contract, we're down to twenty-one ponds, because we had already, we couldn't wait, we had to fit into compliance, so we're doing that same thought process.
You can't do it retro.
Correct, we're doing that.
I know.
We try, we can try, but.
Maybe you actually.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my last question.
Oh, girl, to follow up the last thing.
Oh, okay.
Is if you took three hundred thousand out of reserves and only paid for three hundred in budget this year, then next year, you put it back, and you don't do anything. So then between the two years, you're back. So it's a three hundred thousand dollar variable expense based on what P-PAC wants to do.
Okay.
They can assess for it, we pay it all now, or not.
So it's long, so once you approve the high watermark, if P-PAC wants to pay for items out of reserves, absolutely, as long as that assessment, it cannot go over.
Right. They wish we would.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sure they will have some discussions in the next meetings, we hope, about that. Okay, and then my last, uh, question was to Tony. Tony's, uh, Stony Brook isn't in here, it's, it's in, it isn't.
We're, we're confident it will all be achieved.
The thirtieth?
Well, by, for the thirtieth, yes, by the, yeah.
September thirtieth. And I did have a conversation with AT about their asset meeting regarding like the reason why it's not there, whether we have options, if there's a special assess, but he's also very confident that by the thirtieth will be there, aware that if it's not, that's what we're gonna develop.
Hopefully, hopefully by August, actually, that's kind of the way, because I guess Charles Mann is out in PTO for a few weeks, there was another attorney assigned to it, so hopefully we can move it longer, that from July, no, no, this, for either one.
Okay, good.
But on this point.
But just, let's just say.
The way you took from the law.
Shit happens. You know, just, let's just say something goes wrong in all of this, then there's no money there.
So they do have about, well, they're trying, we're trying to spend it down, anticipating this turnover, but they do have three hundred thousand dollars, a little more than that, and they're, they're.
That must.
Three hundred.
That was like, a little less than two, I think. You know, huh?
So.
So there would be enough.
I think you're, I know it's available.
I was having stuff encumbered already.
So there would be enough to carry them for the one year?
As long as we don't spend it down too much between now and then, but our, our goal is to get.
That's the whole goal, let's just spend it out.
Well, it, it, it's a double, double-edged sword, so we're being cognizant, we wanna get the, the paperwork in escrow, because once it's in escrow, we're golden.
Yeah, the, the, the association and the district are on the same page.
Yes.
And we're all squared away. It's in, and Charles Mann didn't have any comments or concerns, it was internal to WCI, and their senior vice president wasn't available for a while, but, so that's why.
Worst case scenario, girl, like Lawrie mentioned, we could do a special assessment, it would be cumbersome, but we could do it, and, I mean, or.
Okay, and I asked you, I asked you to ensure, because you're at zero, you can't go up from zero.
Yes, ma'am.
From the high watermark, so.
No, but, but again, that's the idea, that if, if beginning of fiscal year, this hasn't been resolved, then it can go to the special assessment process where they get your rec bill. It takes a little more time, but again, that can, that can take forever.
That's the safety net.
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, I have a question on the electric, streetlights, electricity, streetlights.
The second, that's the.
It's under safety and security.
Yep.
And my guess, my question is, are we factoring in the conversion of FPLs?
Yes.
Yes.
Even though we, it's probably not gonna happen in that fiscal year?
No, from what, um, the Eric Cullen with FTL said, it would be about this time next year.
At that start?
Well, that, that he would, that the project would start and, and or be complete, so it's only taken us, between them starting and stopping, about five months to do ours. So we're at high water, we'll have a better idea where we're at.
Okay, so if they start next June or July, which is one, I think either Eric's day, and it goes five months, it'll take, button up, I guess, the end of fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay. All through here, I see a lot of ten percent increase things.
Mm-hmm.
Is that close? I mean, right now, inflation's decreasing.
That's what we were told, based on the utilities, between, like, if you're looking at the.
Well, no, not the utility, anything, I mean, anything on here, there's a lot of things that got ten percent bump ups.
Is there a specific one?
Well, this one is ten percent, again, because that's what we're.
But even in year one, I know it's gonna be. We have the option.
A lot of that's surrounded, like, insurance, and that, like, we have additional assets coming on, like, we, we added the fountain this year, we're gonna be adding that in the building, the storage building's gotta be added, so those insurance things are gonna be shared, and you don't have those numbers until.
I told, I told, I actually, I won't add them till September or October, so, but I didn't just randomly increase stuff, but most of the things, if you look for the ten percent, is it's on utilities, electricity, water, insurance, things like that.
So under the existing contract that the district, perhaps, you know, what's the, what's the yearly bump up?
It depends, because.
Capital cost.
They have, it depends every, what, you mean what we're just putting in, or?
What, what you currently have in, they put new stuff in.
Uh-huh.
What's gonna be the cost next year?
No, I don't know if there's an increase, because I would tell, for, because we have the same scenario, I don't, there is no increase for that.
I know, it's kind of my fault, wasn't it?
Yeah, we, we'll follow up there, but I, on my.
They do have, they do have a, a hearing in, sketch, soon, yeah.
More? No, there's one for March, for next year, too.
The increase, I think, goes into affective marks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're subject to those future increases.
Yes.
But it'll be across the state, it won't be specified.
Yeah, their public, Public Service Commission has, they have to go in front of them and ask for rate increases, but our FPL guy called us, our account rep called us a month ago and said, hey, just as an FYI.
Heads up.
And then he actually sent us the sheet of what they were projecting, so.
By the contract, it's not, there's not an escalator in there.
Yeah.
But what's told, okay, thank you.
If, if ours goes up, everybody's, we're not, so.
Okay. That's the way I am.
All right.
Anything else for O-02? Is there any next one? Anything, nothing for Stoner Druck, there is nothing. Town lakes, we're choosing to use, we're, we're putting in a budget, but we're choosing to use reserves, so they will not have an assessment, um, and we're hopefully getting an answer after, on the next item, get an update from Ed. Lakebank, we reduced this, uh, to a million, so we only have the one Met Tower contract remaining, um, that you will approve this year, Mother Nature, she started raining, so that we anticipate it will be next year. Other than that, other than Pelican's Pond Forty-three, I do not intend on doing any, any additional pond bank restoration, uh, projects until we get that HMGP grant.
So we're putting everything else on the shelf?
Yes, we're gonna continue to do our, our point, point repairs, we're, we're in design right now for the twenty-one ponds for the HMGP, uh, we have to finish that, the, the design, that's, they call, they call that phase one. They have to approve the design, and then you pass go, collect two hundred dollars, you move to phase two, and you get your construction funds.
If we spend this new year?
We are, we are spending.
Okay, am I correct in assuming that next year, when I look at the big spreadsheet, it's gonna increase from twenty-one million to twenty-two?
Depends on how much we actually spend.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, so nothing for Lakebank. All right. Enterprise Fund, does anybody have any questions on the Enterprise Fund?
Did you ever get a clarification from the county as to that additional amount that they want to increase, all of these, whether that was with the water, already the eight percent for the water, in addition to that, or just another eight percent?
I, I have not had a chance to get clarification on that, um, he did send me the updated numbers, um, it's all what they're proposing, it's all kind of in the air until it actually goes in front of the board accounting commissioners, um, so I am keeping in touch with them to make sure, uh, I said, I told my, give me a two-month heads up, because whatever you do, we have to backtrack on our side and make sure we account for it, otherwise, we're gonna be paying for it, so.
Well, it sounds if they have the hole that somebody mentioned before, thirteen million or something, sounds to me like it's in addition too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get clarification for your next meeting.
Yeah, but that's a utility issue, but I think you started.
That's a general fund, a general fund.
Well, we have to have another rate study.
Yeah, it depends on how serious it is.
Right.
Or maybe not rate study, but just increase it by the actual number that the county passed, it's a pass.
Pass there.
Just a straight pass.
I'll have an answer before the next meeting.
Okay.
Anything for the Enterprise Fund?
I don't have anything.
I have one question, most of our vehicles, right now, I assume we're gasoline or diesel?
We have a blend, a mix, yeah, gasoline.
Do we have any totally electric?
No.
Is there a reason we don't, or? Is there an opportunity there?
Wait, I'll, I'll, I'll touch on that, I recall about two years ago, that Chelsea brought up the.
Electricity.
The charging stations, and I think the entire board was like, absolutely not, so I think maybe that's why, because that was a revenue generator too, so it was like, it was a.
Where I'm coming from, I mean, these are all short-term trips, the majority of what you're paying.
So I will say the problem with, and I don't have an electric vehicle, I don't, I don't know much about them, but.
See, why?
Most of our vehicles, because they're parked alongside the road, have to have the lights on, so they have to stay on, otherwise you'll kill the battery, I don't know how that would work with an electric vehicle, we can always look.
I would just, just like to look at it, and I'm not in favor of electric vehicles, I don't have a tree under, but for short-term trips, for short-term trips, it looks like an opportunity, because when I look at gasoline, uh, with twenty thousand, twenty-six thousand a year, uh, that just seems like something, for some vehicles, it might be a.
We, we piggyback either the Sheriff's Association contract or the state contract, so we get, probably not as good as you, but we, we get a pretty good deal on our vehicles, uh, but we can evaluate that moving forward, for sure.
Until the government figures out a way to tax the room using a electric vehicle, the gas customers are paying for all of it.
Yeah.
Sooner or later, that might come, I would think, how it's tipping its weight in each dollar, dollar, or say, I might just.
The only thing, we'd have to install an electric start, charging station, and then we have to, that's.
That was the one.
But they generally park every night, just to spot the chargers.
Absolutely, we'll look into it.
It's a hybrid.
Or hybrid, yeah.
Yeah.
Hybrid's another one.
Absolutely.
It's, I guess, the script's right, it's a hybrid.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna see if we're considered, particularly in Enterprise.
Okay. Any, with the Enterprise Fund, a lot of our trucks and same public works, they gotta be heavy duty, pull the equipment that we pull, so I don't know that they'll be suitable, but for like the inspection, like for pond inspections, or even with admin, we can look at one. All right, anything else for Enterprise? Hearing that.
That's it.
All right.
All right.
I don't, we don't have any additional items for, uh, this, other than, uh, Tony, we have the, do we have to set the public approval to set the public hearing?
Yeah, the board will adopt the resolution to set the public hearing, I think, the resolution is in your agenda package, referencing that we're going to base it on version four. There would be the proposed.
There would be the proposed budget that would be referenced and posted. And I guess one of the questions is, right now, the draft resolution sets the public hearing date and time and location is here. Is anticipated that there might be an alternate location depending upon.
We will have overflow at the church. We have secured that location. This church right here.
That would need to be also, we need to add that to the resolution and add that address and location for overflow.
So proposed version four.
Which the only change is reducing the site to 70K.
One last.
Did you state the motion?
Well, the motion be to adopt resolution with the 2025 dash. A resolution 2025-17, study approving the budget for purposes of transmitting to the city of Fort Myers and to Lee County. And post on the district website as appropriate and the date and time of the public hearing. It'd be August 21st, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the district boardroom with overflow. Location of the church, we'll put that address across the screen.
And we need to reference some of that motion, Tony, version four.
Yeah, this, well, it'll be.
It'll be attached, it's the exhibit album, so that's, that's what it will be attached. And it also outlines in the resolution, the directions to the manager for advertising. And we're working on that, we have a draft advertising already.
Yes.
Three, actually, there's three notices that we're going to debate. Because of, again, because of the assessment methodology, similar to what we did back in 2020.
Do you agree on that?
Yes, there'll be a motion.
I understand.
I'll second the motion. I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
One last format question for Ms. LaRue. I love the fact that we got our versions on here now.
Who's Ms. LaRue?
I'm sorry.
You call me Ms. LaRue.
Ms. Lauren. Roy.
He merged the two.
Now you understand, that's a senior moment.
You're calling out on it.
Flash, uh.
I wish that Laura changed her name.
Well, I thought my slashes were good, I got the assessments down, come on.
Anyway.
Well, you didn't get them down for us, I've got quarters. Version three is on the left-hand side, the date's on the right.
Yeah.
Please put the page numbers in the chat.
Just for.
Page one or whatever, because that way, when we're looking, a lot of times, we, we just make it easier.
Okay, this will, and this will, the next time you see this, it will.
It will be pretty.
It will be cleaned up and then the typical version that you're used to seeing, like we new adopted. So this is the, a working version, just because.
So one change and then one, adding one note with that show.
I already had it on, show.
Yeah, I already had it on.
No, it's already gone, I just need to, okay.
All right, thank you. So we'll have the public hearing. So Tony, the three notices.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yeah.
Already built, okay. I was focused on LaRue.
Yeah.
Things already dry.
Tony, do you just want to touch on the three notices that we'll, we'll be sending?
Yeah, the notices, the usual notice of the public hearing and the budget hearing. Then there's also a notice of the budget hearing, public hearing and living of assessments. Actually, there's, there's two resolutions in two months. And so, and then the notice will be sent by mail. The individual property owners, or either the methodology, all of them will get it because the methodology has changed. And also some will get it because of the increased assessments. The statute has four times when you have to mail notices as well as proof and add in newspaper. So that, that would be in advance, well, in advance of the meeting.
I think all that stuff is nice and it's the legal ease, but that doesn't help the guy on the street. We need to have a brief letter that, that we send out to our residents that in English says what we did. Because there is still a lot of mistrust and how we got that $1,800. It's like, what did you try to do? Pull it off? Pull it off on us? Then we're not asleep out there. We need to explain how this thing generated. Because somebody's going to look at it and look at it like, it was nothing but a wish this and we caught him. Well, I guess one. We need to have an explanation of what happened.
I sent, I sent some screenshots to Chelsea yesterday. I was, how do I, how do we even explain this? Let me, that's for short to the point.
Yeah, short to the point.
One thing, we'll work with staff on that, because we want to make sure we don't anything that's contradictory or runs afoul or.
What's that about?
Oh, no, no, I, I understand what you're, the approach and the concept.
We can have a, remember, Chris, maybe there's ladder one time?
Yeah.
Okay, now that.
Yeah, we need, it just needs to be something to explain how we got from version one at 1,800 down to 1,100, whatever the number is, that the basis of it, because when you start, okay, something simple, the legalese doesn't get it.
Okay.
Four more.
I have it, I'll make it.
Nothing else, nothing else in the budget?
No, so we'll go ahead and look to Town Lakes and Ed. Give us a few.
Bottom line is, Vince is not going to sign the deal. He doesn't understand it. He wants a pound of flesh for what happened 18 years ago. And I don't know what happened 18 years ago, but somehow the ball got dropped. And I told him, I said, Vince, if this is the opportunity to get this thing fixed once and for all and eliminate this issue, the one that you had prepared had some issues in it that, and I, I, I think he had the understanding that you, Tony, drafted that, but the document itself was unclear.
I did not.
He prepared it.
That's correct.
So it, it, it just was not, all of those things added, his deal is, no, I'm not going to sign it. He said, I will talk to people in Tallahassee, but I said, well, we really need to have it for today's meeting.
And they said, and he was the only one?
Well, he's the only local surviving member, officer at the time of the solution. And I know, and I spoke, and he mentioned something about wanting some protection, in case everybody went after him. I'm comfortable having language in the deed that the district is granted will defend the conveyance against claims of all other parties. And it, and so I'm comfortable.
And I suggested that and still he said, I, I've got to talk to Tallahassee. So I don't know who he's talking to in Tallahassee, but he, he, he does imply that he's talking to another attorney. But he's stuck, he's not going to sign it.
Any alternative, you know, we can try to file, we can file a quiet title action, I spoke to the board in order about doing that. Saying that, indicating he provided the deed, the district has been operating containing it. And we have, and hopefully get a default judgment, quieting the title in the name of the district. So that can happen if it's, if there's a default judgment, nobody answers, no response, we serve everybody in that.
I think we proceed with that.
Yeah, and we can work on the budget.
I think we proceed with that.
What we'll do is, we'll prepare a budget for that action, or a quiet title action. And bring that to the board and start that process and the board approves the budget.
Has.
Okay, Chelsea, are you good with that?
Has anybody talked to the 13, I think 13 property owners down there? Do they understand what we're doing?
We have, we have not reached out to the property owners.
I really think we should reach out to them. I don't even know that they know they're being assessed.
Well, I think what would be helpful about that is we can also discuss with them that, listen, if we file this quiet title action, we don't want you to incur any legal fees. And so here's what we want to do, we want to get, make sure the name, the title to the property is in the name of the district. And it'll save a lot of.
So you write something about that?
And then say, here, here's, and if, if we file a quiet title action, we'd like you to consent to entry of adjustment. And we're not going to give attorneys fees from you or costs or expenses. We just want to have the name of the, the title of the road in the name of the district.
You don't think Vince will sign with the, the additional language that Tony is proposing?
I brought that up to him, he said, I want to talk to Tallahassee, who he's going to talk to in Tallahassee, I have no clue.
And I will prepare a budget and date my.
But I think if we would get Tony to draft not a legal ease letter, but a letter to these 13 owners letting them know, perhaps, perhaps, making one or two of them call Vince, Vince, sign this and get it over with. We're not coming after you for this. Water is way over the dam of what happened 17 years ago.
So you're saying he's the only one local, but isn't somebody else that we're going to reach out to?
Uh, there was, there were four people at the time of dissolution, I'll, I'll check if I can find them. I think the only person I could find last time was Vince.
Yeah.
It was my recollection.
Because Vince was the closest in.
It was my recollection last time.
Vince was the president at the time, that's right.
Any?
And I worked with Chelsea on a short letter with a reasonable sized font, one thing.
So Tony, just, so of those four people, any one of them could sign this?
Yes.
Yes.
Tony, due to who they are.
Give me the names.
If you know the names, maybe I know some, some.
I'll, I can check real quick.
I don't need them right now, give them to me, you know.
Okay, they're in the mail, we'll come back then, I can go to some business real quick.
All right, I don't have anything else regarding Town Lakes. Like I said, with the budget, we're going to just use reserves to offset. And we've got a plan to address some of the maintenance issues over there and we'll get going on that. So I don't have anything else.
Comments?
Can we get a compensation for this week since we canceled it? Would you?
So.
No, it's a continuation.
Continuation.
It's a different day, definitely.
We got any comments?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because I got one we got to get.
All right, so let's.
What would be the answer to my question?
Continuation, it's a, it's a continuation, so it's the same meeting.
Yeah.
It's not.
I drove over your question.
Me too.
You took you miles and you can expect the mileage.
Sure, no, let your people.
All right, so go ahead and do the supervisor comments, Carol.
No.
Yes, not, not just because they're sitting in the back row, but I am getting very, very frustrated that we are getting nowhere on Santa Luis, on that pond. Lennar is just doing nothing. I would suggest that we give them a letter and give them seven days. If they aren't doing anything, let them know that we're going to file whatever necessary actions is with Lee County. Co-enforcement? Co-enforcement of the fact that they are not honoring what they said they were going to do in that community. And put it into this, those residents have put up with this crap long enough.
So Tony and I discussed this in our weekly meeting. We two are fed up, just so you, you all know. We do have our engineering firm going out there monthly and taking pictures and measuring the erosion that is growing even worse.
Getting worse.
Um, so Tony did ask that I solicit some proposals and cost estimates that it would take to bring that to the standards and to the requirements. I've got to reach out to the, the three vendors. I do plan on sending that out today. That way we can have a dollar value associated to these damages. And then Tony, if you want to just tell them, go from there, what.
Yeah, coenforcement and also not, not depending on the demand, I'm going to do it. And look at all routes for litigation if necessary. I think co-enforcements.
Lennar has asked us to review Arborwood, since we haven't taken over Arborwood Phase Three. So he asked for an inspection yesterday and I replied with, depending on his answer on Santa Luis.
Good answer.
That was good.
Are, are, has Lennar been in communication?
Yes.
With, with, with you and, and so what is their delay?
I have not received a response regarding the delay from Lennar for Santa Luis, but they are answering other questions other than Santa Luis. So my, they don't get answers from me unless I get an answer from them, is where, is where I'm at.
Randy outside.
Just real quick, there's three people, Vince Sardo, David Tibol, T-I-V-O-L, and Wolf Chakowski.
Can you email me those, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
They just had three?
Yes.
We're going on a detective hunt.
Stop. Nothing. I just have two things. So you reach out to Lee County Sheriff's Office for a presentation of the cameras?
I will.
Okay. And I did notice that we talked about yesterday the painting of Griffin in the roads.
Yes.
Yeah. Is the plan of, sorry, Gili Bolivar. Is the plan of doing Griffin in the side roads as well or just Gili Bolivar?
I don't know, that was Lee County DOT.
Can you find, can Paul?
I'm assuming Paul come back.
Okay.
What are you, what are you talking about here?
Lee County DOT.
No, I mean, can Paul reach out to the, I don't.
Yeah, Lee County DOT came out yesterday with their truck and painted the, the lines on Gateway Boulevard.
I saw, yeah.
So we're trying to see if they're going to do the other side roads.
And then lastly, I, I have one thing from Randy, he just.
The audit.
I need your audit.
Yours.
I had, I printed out the paper, so I just need you to fill this out.
All right.
Okay, and then last, uh, two more things, the pond, Pelican Pond, that pond that I went and visited, I think I've been to. How were, are we good? Is everything you were there? To your.
What Doug told me yesterday was he's happy, but to repair it, we really won't see any. The, the washouts have all been fixed.
Okay, and has, has Paul visited that pond?
For his six?
Mm-hmm, no. That's a horse pond.
Okay, but given it, I think, since Doug checked it, I think we stopped, should just double check that.
Yeah, because we've had a lot of heavy rain.
Yeah, and that's why I was making.
That's right. I look at it and I'm like.
Yeah.
We, we rely on the Pelican Pond Subcommittee, but we'll.
But I think on this one, just keep it in the.
And it's something there before the bonds fill, they'll fix it.
Okay, and then I did receive a few emails about the e-bikes, mainly from Stony Brook. And I know we had some damages at the North Forest and then I guess yesterday, Hampton Park. We have talked to Lee County Sheriff's Office. What is their deal?
We're working with them closely right now.
Statute is.
Their, their, their problem is, like they told us, our community, is that you guys, you're not going to get anything quickly out of the county until the stat or the legislature does something to define these.
Yeah.
So what they suggested to us, and I've got to bring to my board next week, is we're, what, I want to register these? And I'm talking not e-bikes, I'm talking e-dirt bikes. They're the ones that are.
Above the 720 or 750?
750, yeah. They're doing 30, 35 mile an hour. And they come up with a policy of like, because our roads are private, we can say that you can't be on the sidewalks. They can't do that because the state statute allows them to be on the sidewalk. But his deal was that they're just, you're not, don't expect anything out of the county.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, to me, the white ones, the last damage that, that, that is a different issue. They're going into the white line and creating damage.
The bikes are?
The bikes are, so there's some pictures, I think I've forwarded with the, the file, I haven't seen it in the email. And mainly of the FPL easement and then also Hampton Park Conservation, so maybe staff can go and visit those areas.
Can you send me the.
Got an idea.
So, so that we can address. And that's what I think with Lee County, if we can just find out who they are, because we cannot enforce the riding on the sidewalk, but we can enforce the damages, we can enforce other things like FPL easement, you know, trespassing there.
Yes, trespassing is extremely difficult because the bikes are very similar and they're wearing. They have tags?
No.
No.
And there's very many that, we've been talking about this with Tony, and my kid's got a bike and it's, my concern is when he's riding with his black helmet and his black bike, he's being associated with every other eight, 12, the other bikes that are out there. And I'm not saying we don't do anything, but maybe it's more, we have to be more vigilant when we see something happen. We have to call and report it immediately.
But I think, I mean, they drive to that FPL easement, because I, we have the game cameras there, they drive to that FPL easement daily, three to four times a day.
And there's nothing wrong with that.
No, there is something wrong with that, there shouldn't be that, we're not.
You can't, we can't restrict people from riding on the easement.
Yes, no motorized vehicle.
In the owner.
That's a bike, it's a bicycle.
No, it says no motorized anything.
No, no.
No, I'm talking about the dirt bikes.
You're talking about if it's classified as a.
I'm talking about those.
Okay, just want to make sure we're clear that we're not.
If we haven't detailed there and if they catch them there, they can trespass it. I will tell you that the last time I was doing some B removal over there, the police actually stopped. They came from Stony Brook, they put one of the kids in the car and the other one was holding and waiting on the bike on Gateway Boulevard. So I don't know, and it was actually a row. They took the girl into the car, back to Stony Brook and left the bike with the sidewalk with the other person that was riding. I don't know what the issue happened, but I did see that.
So as long as the bikes not motorized, they can, is that what they're issuing?
No, it's, there's classifications.
There's different types.
So if you, three classes of e-bikes and then there are e-dirt bikes, totally different on power. That's, that's what we're worried about, the e-dirt bikes. People buy and the kids buy a dirt bike to joyride. Going up and down the sidewalk, don't get it. They want to go to someplace where they can throw the dirt in the sand. And there's no place here to do it.
Except for the FPL easement.
So I, there's a. So I, I think there's a.
I, I questioned them, as a board member and protecting the community, I questioned liability of us allowing it to happen. Why are we allowing them, if they wanna go up and down the blacktop, that's one thing. But to go out there and drive through that deal, somebody has a wreck, somebody hit something, somebody hits a wire that's sticking out there, because they didn't see it, cuts their head off, guess who's gonna get sued?
Do we have enough warrant signs out there, no motorized vehicles, electric?
There's only, that's only one on Griffin, I do not believe there's one on Gili Bolivar.
That's why I come full back, our agreement with Lee County, does that give us any right, I know the roads are a total reclamation issue, but because we have some liability on those sidewalks, replacement and all that, does that give us any right to do a policy on the use of the sidewalks by?
I'd say no, no, again, our, our agreement is only to meet.
So the only thing that we could do then would be on the roads that, the paths that we own, i.e. the.
No, nothing.
FPL easement.
Oh, yeah, that.
The FPL easement, we could, we could adopt a policy on that, but that'd be about it.
Yes, how about the linear parks, can they ride up and down?
That's what we're talking about.
When we say FPL easement, really.
Well, to me, to me, going up and down the, the park and just riding on the pavement, that's, that's one thing. I mean, it's pretty stupid that you would have a replant that would be so anal to eliminate it there and you go outside and you do it, I mean, that doesn't make sense. But on the other hand, it's, I mean, you're still on the block.
There's two things we're trying to eliminate, one is damage to property.
Yep.
And two is safety risk and concerns, both to the rider and to the other residents of the other community. And unfortunately, the way these, the way these are classified, is it puts them in, most of them in the bucket of a bike. Now, the question would be, if I'm riding a bike and I'm doing wheelies on the sidewalk or in the middle of the road, if an officer were to stop me, you know, what would our, what would our position be if these were just regular bicycles? And there was careless and reckless activity going on, is there, would there be any enforcement, is there anything? I mean, I read through the statutes and I can't find anything, but.
I guess the question, our concern, Tony, the concern is going off the paved path, because that's a clear path, as far as the FPL easement. But I said, when you go off the paved path, you're into, you have retention areas, you have unapproved areas, you have diewires, you have cables, you have.
And that's, and that's what I was, like, and the farm, like, the pictures.
Well, that's, that's advantage, but I'm talking about the safety concerns that residents have, you know, and like in Stony Brook, they're riding on the roads, on the smaller sidewalk, on the larger sidewalk, and.
Do you guys wanna take this up as much in the future?
Yes.
Yeah, I think a conference approach.
Yeah.
On District Council.
I know we're, we're taking, we, we've got an executive session Monday to go with this issue, because we sent a letter to five kids that were identified illegally entering our community. And they, the parent of one came back to us with basically what appears to be coming up in the lawsuit. And our deal is, we're gonna put it out, we're gonna put.
That's a lovely experience. I mean, my kid does nothing wrong.
Well, when they come out, when they say, you guys got, you got a little bit different deals, is that ours are private roads, and that's a big, big difference.
Ours are riding on the golf course.
Well, yeah, our, our too, the issue is, is that it's, it's gotta stop, and some of these parents, it's ridiculous what they're.
You're criticizing my child?
All right, we will bring this back.
I moved to a church.
I moved to a church, that's my father.
She got paid in November.
I didn't need any of that. You just got 50% of it.